Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. I'm your host, Bill Keegan, town manager here in Foxborough. Here with me today is the new director of finance, George Samir, and welcome, George.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here today. George has been around municipal business for a long time, almost 30 years. And most recently came to us from East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, where he served in a dual role of town administrator as well as director of finance. And so tell us a little bit about yourself, George, and you've been on the job since August 1st, so you've survived for the first three months. So I'm glad to see that, glad you're still here.
Well, like anything, there's always a period of time you need to get your feet wet, and no matter how good you are, you're still picking up after, or trying to figure out where somebody else's thought processes and things were going. The good news is that the town itself has kept itself in pretty good shape. Even with some of the holes that were out there, there's been a lot of things that have just maintained and stayed there, and I think that's a tribute to the staff that's been at the town hall and the people who've maintained things while there's been some turnover.
Yeah, so thanks for jumping in and helping out the way you have. Also, at the same day you started, I think we had a new director of accounting as well.
Yes, Marie.
Marie and Almodova?
Emendova.
Emendova, thank you. I always have trouble spelling her last name or pronouncing her last name. But Marie has done a terrific job jumping in too, and so we've got the books balanced. Everything's turned over to the state. We've got free cash certified, so we're in good shape that way, and we're ready for town meeting.
Yes.
So speaking of town meeting, we've got one coming up on November 4th at 7:30 at the Foxborough High School. And so let's talk a little bit about that today. There are 12 articles up for consideration, and so let's go through them one by one and talk a little bit about them to give the listening audience a little bit of a highlight as to what they can expect on November 4th. So first is an article to put funding back into capital stabilization. So this is something we do typically this time of year. Once we have free cash certified, we can take some money and put it into the capital stabilization fund. What's happened this past year is that we actually took a good chunk of money out of that fund to pay, to help go towards the new borough school project. And so that day, we got that number down, actually below the number we'd like it to be, which is at least $100,000 in there. So now, I think we took several million dollars out of that to help pay for that project. So we're gonna put $250,000 back in that, was our recommendation. And right now, the advisory committee is recommending that as well. So that'll put that back over where the minimum amount, which is $100,000, which is based on our policies.
And it's probably important to point out for folks that are sitting at home, this is two, number two of two stabilizations we have. We have a regular stabilization that's still maintaining a $3.5 million dollar amount, and this one is a capital stabilization fund, which is historically, you use it for capital projects. And the town, through a series of self-imposed bylaws, or if you will, financial bylaws, if you will, policies, or whatever, has maintained a, you know, has rules to say, we want to keep these things up and try to keep them, you know.
Certain levels.
Right. They're very good policies as well.
Right. So we've actually tried to, we try to build our financial functions around those policies. And we just recently went through those at the financial summit, which we had just two weeks ago.
Yes.
And found that we're in compliance with all those policies as we currently stand. So that was good news on that, and just good news to report out to the public as well.
Yes.
So the second article is one which affects actually the administration budget, and that was to put funding back into that budget, which was reduced at the annual town meeting this past year from the recommended budget, which was about $26,500 was actually removed from that line. Since that time, we've had quite a bit of discussion about that, and we've also even recommended a lower number go into that, go back into that number, into that fund as opposed to what the 26.5. We're actually recommending a 21.5, which is being supported by the advisory committee by a 6-1, 6-1 and 1 margin. The Board of Selectmen is in full support of that as well.
Yes.
And it's really important because it actually will help maintain our current staffing levels in the department. We currently have a vacancy in the department, but we're actually ready to offer a job to a person to refill that spot. Actually, if that funding goes through, we will actually make that offer on the next day, on Tuesday, to that candidate. I don't want anyone to think that because there is a vacancy that we can sustain that. We really can't. That's a really important position for us because it actually supports the Board of Selectmen through their, as their minotaker, as well as is our key information person for the community.
Former communications.
Yeah, our PIO, if you will, for the kind of way of getting information out to the public. So that's a really important position and one that we really can't do without. So we're hoping that that gets resolved Tuesday night, or Monday, rather, Monday night at town meeting. So I'm hoping that we'll get the full support for that as well.
Yeah, it's kind of an important, in the era that we're in, where everyone speaks transparency, that's one of those key.
It really is. And I just recently came, returned from a national meeting on International City Managers' Meeting, just this past, I came back on Saturday, and that was probably the number one topic that was discussed throughout the entire conference was communication and how we communicate to the public and how that's evolved over time, because there's less opportunities for us to get information out because newspapers are going out of business. There's fewer few reporters that are covering meetings. So it's really important that we get the message out because social media has sort of more or less taken over. And unfortunately, the problem with social media is not always accurate. And so we have to try and do the best thing we can by getting the word out and providing good, solid information for the public so that they're kept informed of what's going on. So moving on to Article 3, this is another item that was subsequently reduced at the annual town meeting, but as time has gone on, the advisory committee, the selectmen, myself, the police department have all determined that this actually, this amount of money needs to be restored, and that is the amount for a new police cruiser. We asked for four at the annual town meeting, unfortunately, we're only funded for three. Since that time, though, there's been quite a bit of discussion. The new police chief, who was on my last show, Chief Mike Grace, was able to provide a lot more detail to the advisory committee about that and to provide more information to anyone who wanted to hear about it, was that this is a vehicle that absolutely is essential to keeping their fleet up to speed. So, and it subsequently was supported by unanimous vote by the advisory committee. So any other thoughts about that?
Well, yeah, I do believe that a lot of people make the misconception, not just here in Foxborough, but in other towns that I've been in, they see the police, they're buying a cruiser, and they're, how many cruises do you need? What everybody tends to forget is, is these are being turned over, they're refreshing the fleet constantly, where you're getting rid of older vehicles and replacing them with a newer one. In, I won't mention the town again, but in past experience I had, we had a situation with the fire department where we had to spend almost $2.5 million to, because these were just failed. Failed all at once. So we got on to a rotating schedule like Chief Grace is doing right now to prevent that from happening again.
Yeah, so we're pretty good about keeping the fleet refreshed here. I think we, this was one of those years where we needed to have four vehicles, and they have a good, they have, keep a lot of details on those vehicles so that they know exactly how much, how many hours they're on. And a lot of times, it's not even the mileage, but it's also, it's the hours those vehicles are running. Because a lot of times, they don't go turned off because it just goes from shift to shift.
Plus in the winter.
In the wintertime.
Well, you know, if it's ice cold, they can't afford to wait for the car to heat up. If it's an emergency, they gotta keep that engine running.
That's right. So I think that's, this is an important appropriation, and again, supported unanimously by the advisory committee, so I'm hoping that the town meeting will subsequently fund that as well. So moving on to Article 4, this is to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate funding for a feasibility study for a council on aging and human services senior center building. And so this is something that has come up during the past year. Mark Craig, who is the new director of the Council on Aging and Human Services, has taken a more, a much more active role in creating more programs and getting seniors more involved in the community. And as a result, his numbers at the center have actually, have actually increased rather substantially during the past, during the past few years. So he is, you know, it's gotten to the point where they could use some more space, they could use some more room to do their programs. And not only that, but there is, there seems to be a trend that's evolved in more recent years of looking at that from not just a senior perspective, but actually from a
Community.
Community perspective. So we're gonna take a look at that too. I think that's, the study is gonna, it's not just focused on one segment of the population, it's gonna take a look at what would make sense for the entire community, for all ages in terms of recreation or a community type center. So the amount recommended for the study is $40,000, and I believe there's gonna be some money that's gonna be matched by the Friends of Organization. So they've actually stepped up and said they would help with the funding of that project as well. So we'll have to wait and see if in fact that'll, if town meeting will support it, but I do believe there is quite a bit of support for it, as I can see.
Keep in mind too, I think a lot of people focus on just the building aspect of it. Oftentimes, these, in the process of this type of a study, they also reveal, you might come up with places for outside funding, not just the town. It could have been state grants, federal grants, or something to that effect, that if it's done properly, you might be able to find some extra funding sources.
And knowing Foxborough the way I do, it sounds to me that Foxborough will look at every option, including private funding, fundraising, as well as, you know, funds from the federal government or the state government to assist in that effort. So we will certainly, you know, pull out all the stops and try and make this happen. But first, let's determine what the need is, where it might be located, that type of thing, to see how it might work. So the next is Article 5, and that is to accept Montgomery Way as a public way. And throughout the, this is a, Montgomery Way is a road located in the Durham Park subdivision, and throughout the course of the year, you find that subdivisions finally get to a point where they're acceptable by the planning board. Planning board and the town engineer, along with the public works department, go out and inspect these roads to make sure that they've met all our standards for construction before they get turned over to us. And so this is one of those roads that's reached that point. And so we're looking at accepting a portion of Montgomery Way from its intersection of Caucasse Street, generally northerly approximately 751 feet or less to the terminus at a cul-de-sac. So this is, again, just adding another road to our cadre of roads throughout the community and one of the newest ones in terms of a new subdivision.
Sure.
And that is being recommended by the planning board. And Article 6 is to also accept the road, that is to accept Van Dorn Avenue, located within the Governor's Meadow subdivision, and has been constructed pursuant to the planning board's subdivision rules and regs, and also has met the standards as prescribed by the town. And we look to, that as well as being recommended by the planning board for Article 6. So Article 7, moving on to Article 7, is the, is an article to see if the town will vote to extend the Affordable Housing Trust established by Article 20 at the May 13th, 2013 annual town meeting. So this was a, the amount of money that was set aside from a previous project, that was about $350,000, $320,000, if I'm not mistaken. And there has been different discussions as to how that money should be used, and so we're looking, but there was a limitation on how long.
Sunset clause.
It was a sunset clause in the provision that said, so this is an opportunity to extend it, extend it out to 2025. So eventually we'll get used. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion within the past few years about how to develop affordable housing in the community. We've got a couple ideas that we're chasing right now to see how we can best do that.
Sure.
So this could be, come in really handy for some of the projects that we're looking at as well. Article 8 is to remove the deputy police chief position from civil service. As everyone knows, we have a new police chief. Chief Baker retired as of October 1st, and so deputy lieutenant, then lieutenant, Mike Grace moved up to become the chief. However, during the time that Chief Baker was here, as well as since Chief Grace has been here as well, there's been a lot of discussion about how to create the position of deputy chief, which, I'll take the chief, deputy chief position out of civil service. We've had the position of deputy chief for a number of years, but it's been vacant. We went with a three lieutenant structure.
Yes.
And now we're gonna go back to a two lieutenant and one deputy chief structure that will serve as the executive, as part of the executive office of the police department. So taking it out of civil service is important because civil service has been, has been challenging in many ways to get results out of that office and to get a list that will work. I'm sure you experienced it in your previous roles as well.
I think you'll, I think you find that it's becoming more and more prevalent, not just here in Foxborough, but all over, where civil service is becoming, they're getting out, that various towns, and not just police, but fire and other thing are getting out, due to the challenge, as you just described, of actually getting the people that you want.
On a list, when you get a list, when you get a list, to get the list to come out. The challenge is that the list can, it can take a long time, it can take months before you can see the list. And when, you know, we look at our current staffing situation, there are, we do have good, sound candidates that can just fill that role.
Exactly.
So we wanna try and take that role on, and I think this is something that makes sense. I know that both Chief Baker, Chief Grace, and former Chief O'Leary, actually, all three of those chiefs support this measure. So we hope that they will, we hope that town meeting will support that as well. And by the way, that was recommended by the advisory committee, by an eight to nothing margin.
Yes.
And so Article 9 is the police contract. We've spent, this is a contract that actually spans two previous fiscal years, or one previous year and one in the current fiscal year. This will run through June 30th, 2020. And it took a little longer than expected to get this resolved, but we ultimately did. And so this is a, this is a good contract, is the, what town is looking to, the funding of about $253,000 to help fund this contract. And we will be, and then we'll be right back at the table again to start the process again with the department. We did try to get a third year, unfortunately, we just weren't able to achieve that. So we said, let's get this one done, and then we can focus on a new contract going forward. So we'll start that process actually in the next few months.
Yes. And most of it is for retroactivity from the prior year, retroactivity up until, and then moving forward.
Moving forward. So we will actually, and I know your department's working hard to try and make sure that we can get that timed out so it can be, it can work to the police officer's advantage as well.
As well as the town.
Towards the town at the same time. All right, so that's Article 9. That again was recommended by the advisory committee by an eight to nothing margin. So Article 10 is moving on to, 10, 11, 12 deal with the issue of kennels and animal control. And so this is, Article 10 deals primarily with the definition of kennels, and how that was previously defined, or was very limited in its definition prior to this action. We have a new animal control officer, again, another retirement. So we've seen a little bit of turnover in the organization, but people have retired, and that happens, we see that, that does happen from time to time. But we've, but our new animal control officer actually sat down and looked at all the rules and regulations, said, you know, this is something that really needs to be updated. So she sat with the town clerk and along with the, who's involved with the dog licensing piece, and also along with our planning director and animal, and our building commissioner, and they sat down and figured out what's the writing language for this. So Article 10 deals primarily with the definition of kennels, commercial versus non-commercial.
Right.
And so this is what this particular article deals with.
Yes.
I think we've had a situation where individual homeowners will actually have multiple dogs, and so they can actually have a non-commercial kennel. It is allowed, but they, but there are very limited, but there's strict rules as to how that's operated.
Right.
And so this actually properly defines that.
Exactly.
The commercial kennel is also defined a little bit more clearly in this new definition as well. So again, something that was needed, it's a positive change in terms of making it clearer for how things can happen throughout the community. So this again was recommended by the advisory committee on an unanimous vote. In fact, the next, the next article, Article 11 was just an actual, just to amend the table, the use of tables for kennels and our zoning bylaws. So is, you have the actual definitions, and you also have the tables, abuse tables, so that when someone looks at the, at the table, they can actually determine whether where kennels allowed or not. And so this is actually updating that, that particular table. Article 111, again, recommended by the town, by the advisory committee. Article 12 is to see, is to, it talks about the amendments to the chapter 78, which is animals and the animal control bylaw, and actually talks about the definitions of how violations and penalties occur, and also actually establishes a leash law, so to speak. So, which is interesting enough, Foxborough never really had one. They had sort of a control measure, but not a real leash law. So this actually helps define that. And then probably the one thing that got the most discussion was the issue of who should hold the hearings, the definition of who should hold the hearings for violations, violation hearings. And during the past few years, the Board of Selectmen has been involved in that process, and more and more communities are starting to move away from that and just have the town manager serving that role. And it's for good reason, just because it's not because of the, first of all, they are different, animal control hearings are never that easy. They tend to be very emotional, and it's a very difficult environment. But during the past year or so, we've had, we had a very difficult one, which actually required the board to actually get subpoenaed, they actually gotta go to court, and they had to take time out of their work to do that. So it became burdensome on them personally. So I think this is something that towns have actually gotten away from that and put it in the hands of the town manager to actually hold the hearings. And by the way, this is not uncommon for a manager to hold hearings as a public hearing office anyways. So it's not an uncommon practice to see that happen. Moreover, there has been, I think, this sense that, that from a hearing, it's still a public process, it's still a very, it's, there's still a method by which a person could appeal the decision. So it's not a final decision by the town manager, regardless of, you know, who makes the decision, whether the Board of Selectmen or the town manager makes it, it's still a hearing, it's still an appeal process, that they can appeal to court, which is really recently what happened with the Board of Selectmen. So I think this is more or less a, to try and remove some of the burden of holding those hearings from the board and put it in the hands, in the full-time staff to conduct those hearings.
I think you hit on it a minute ago when you mentioned about them being, they're primarily voluntary. I mean, they're not here getting paid, whereas the town manager, this is your job. So if you get called into court, it's part of the day's work.
It's part of the day's work.
As opposed to taking somebody that's here already volunteering their time and having them lose a day's pay.
Exactly, because of that. So, so that is it. That's, those are the 12 articles that we, that we intend to go over at the town meeting on this coming Monday night, November 4th, at 7:30 at the Foxborough High School. We hope people will come out and join us for that evening and to see how we can, you know, take care of the town's business. This is the, this is the one time, there's only two times a year where we actually do conduct the town's business, and the town meeting being the legislative body of the community, so we do encourage people to come and attend. And so I think what I'd like to do at this point, George, maybe take a step back and take a look at how we're approaching the budget process this year. We just recently did the
Financial.
The financial summit, which was, which was about two weeks ago. And one of the things that came out of that was, one of the things we changed this time was to, was to try and get more involvement from the public and trying to find out, what's the best way for us to set budget priorities?
Right.
And it's really been unclear to me, and I think unclear to a lot of folks as to how we do that. So we had a real open discussion about this this time, and I think there was quite a bit of good, there was quite a bit of good feedback from the groups that we had. We had the finance committee, or, sorry, the advisory committee that is formed here, and then it's also the Board of Select, the school committee, and the Board of Select, the three major policy boards in town. And also, we had the public there, as well as many department heads and committee members from other, other boards and committees that participated as well. So it was a good discussion about how we can, you know, approach the budget going forward. And I think it's really helpful for all of us to understand that. So I just wanna get your reaction to that and what your thoughts, what your thoughts were to that.
Well, I think the forum was, I was very pleased with the way, there was a lot of interchange between, I mean, I know that if you were looking on the camera, I mean, we've broken up into a number of different groups on a number of different floors, but if you were listening and hearing, you know, there was a lot of good feedback from different people, and things that they were, they were passionate about, and things that they thought they could make a difference by saying. And I, for that, I think it was a very good forum. I think that many people who, in the public, not, again, not just here in the town of Foxborough, just across the state, across the country, sometimes they get confused with the way things are. They were, this is red tape country, when we're talking with the, setting up a budget is done by not only local bylaws and local policies, but then you have statutory policies as well. And many people don't understand them, and sometimes they think that these things are just done by random, or oftentimes, I know from a standpoint, it's either, if you're doing the budget, people think that you're, that the situation is, well, he just decided that this is the way it's gonna be, and oblivious to the fact that, as you just said, the most purest form of government is when we come to the town meeting, and really, that's where the decision is being made.
Right, exactly.
There's a lot of people trying to guide the process as you go along. So I think that if we can continue with this, at least some input from the, from the public, where they're at least trying to, even if not a lot gets changed, at least there's an understanding of this is how this is being put together, and it wasn't done in a vacuum someplace, or something to that effect.
Well, I think this past year was a little bit telling in the sense that, I think there was a sense that there wasn't enough input into the process. And so we're trying to not overreach, but certainly, certainly adjust accordingly to what we think was missing from last year. And I think, you know, granted, last year was a difficult process anyways, because we didn't, we didn't have a finance director at the time, and you were just, you arrived after the process, so you weren't familiar with how it actually happened. But I think, you know, know that now that you're here, I think that will certainly help. I also think too, that it was, the message that I got was pretty clear, that, you know, let's get more input into the process before we start.
Sure.
So it's clear as to what the priorities are. And I, my sense is that I think we've more or less thought that we had a handle on the priorities, priorities, but maybe, you know, we haven't, haven't been as good at that. So I think now we're gonna take a chance to, take the opportunity to really focus on that some more.
Right.
I think also, you touched upon it a minute ago by saying that it's more of an education process.
Yes.
You know, government is set by rules, regulations, state laws, and so we have to follow all of those things. And in the end, one of the things that is probably most telling about this community is the fact that, is that I think the outside agencies, such as Standard and Poor's, who is, comes out of New York, by the way, they don't, they come out and they look at us with a completely unbiased perspective and says, okay, Foxborough, how well are you doing? Well, the fact that we have financial policies in place. Well, the fact that we have financial policies in place, the fact that we're following them, the fact that we're funding our OPEB liabilities, and funding all of our long-term liabilities in such a way that we're, we're buying them down.
Yes.
In such, in a rapid way.
Yes.
Puts us in a position where we are, we're rated AAA, which is the highest you can get, actually higher than the United States, US government.
The US government, they downgraded them, or whatever.
Exactly, yeah. So, so it, it's, that's pretty telling, when you think about that. So we have to be doing it right if that's the case.
Yes.
So, but that, you know, that's set aside, we still want to be listening and understanding what, if we're meeting the needs of what the public wants.
Yes.
And so I think the more and more information we can put out to the public, the better it is, and the more we can educate them on the issues, I think that's really the better approach that we can use.
There are many, many misconceptions. A lot of times, people think we could just spend money as we, there are rules on how the money can be spent, even, even after it's been voted.
Right, right.
And there's a lot of things that folks just don't know, and they think it's like, they think it's either centralized, or just one person's making all the decisions, and that's not, not necessarily.
No, and we're all accountable. I mean, I'm accountable to a five-member Board of Selectmen, you know, or you're, you work for me, for me, for me and for the board as well, so, so I think we're both accountable in that, in that same vein, so.
Then you have that level of statutory.
The statutory, you know, responsibility, so that if we do something wrong, the DOR.
Right.
And the.
Ethics.
Ethics, all those things that come into play.
Right.
All the things that we're governed by.
Right.
We can't, there are certain rules and regulations that we follow on a day-to-day basis as to how we do things.
Yes.
So it's complex. It's, I think it's probably, you've been around the business a long time, and.
And I can promise you, I don't know every one of those laws, I mean.
I don't, I mean, we, we try to, as much as we try to stay ahead of them, we do, but we, it's, but it's hard, because it's, there are so many different twists and turns to it. What's, what's even more complex about it is the fact that the world is a lot more complex, a lot more different today than it was 20, 30 years ago.
Right.
Things were a lot simpler back then.
Absolutely.
Than what they are now. So, I think we have, you know, it's, we learn something new every day.
Right.
When we come to work here, so it's, it's really important that we stay ahead of that, and make sure we get the right word out to, to the community, that we're doing it, we're trying to do it as well.
As best we can.
As best we can, and as well as we can.
Sure.
So, so any, any other final thoughts before we wrap this up today?
No, I mean, I hate to sound like a, I keep reiterating myself in that I, in my prior incarnations, I often was more the conservative fellow, and perhaps where I was working, it wasn't such a conservative town. So unfortunately, I could only dream about some of the things that you folks have pulled or put into motion here in Foxborough. And some of the things that are there, they're very good, and you've done a very good job. The whole town, I keep saying this, because.
It's the whole town, right, it's ultimately the whole town.
It comes down to the people who are voting this at the annual town meetings and your specials. They're supporting it, and the folks that are there doing the job. And you have a very solid financial base right now. And, again, am I saying, "Don't, let's walk away and say that, okay, nothing needs to be fixed, we're running at 110%?" No.
No, no.
But, but overall, you have a very good setup, and financially, you're on good, solid ground, and that's 90% of the battle right there.
It is, it really is. And you pointed, you pointed to me, pointed out to me when you first came here, that the community that you came from was, they were constantly looking to spend more than what they had.
Right.
Foxborough is different in the aspect, you know, we try to limit the amount of spending we had, even though we do have it.
Yeah.
And so, and that's okay, I mean, there's nothing wrong, but it's also important to make sure we stay ahead of the needs.
Right.
So that we don't get whacked with a $2.5 million, you know, replacement program for vehicles and things of that nature, because that becomes a little bit, much more difficult to manage under those circumstances.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a knee-jerk reaction, usually, rather than any kind of controlled.
Great. Well, I want to thank you for joining me.
Thank you.
And thanks for, thanks for being here, and thanks for the work, the fine work that you're doing, and to all the fine work that your department's doing at this point in the, in the department, and we're grateful for all the things that you guys do. I want to thank everyone for joining us here today on this show. I'll be joining you probably in the next month or two with some more things and highlights of things that are going on around town. In the meantime, thanks for, thanks for joining me. I'm Bill Keegan for the Ask Bill Keegan Show, and see, hopefully I'll see you on November 4th at 7:30 at the Foxborough High School for the, for the special town meeting. Thanks for, thanks for joining us, see you next time.
Good day.